Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody here. I want to remind everybody that ESAC County schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society and hopefully we keep that in mind tonight as we make the decisions that we're gonna make. I take a motion to approve the agenda if we don't have to amend it. No, okay. So, over. A motion in the second to approve the agenda. As, bring it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carrying. Uh, three. John, you want to take the word? Your consent items here?
Does anybody have any questions on December 15th minutes? If not, go and take a quick look at the financial statement, get a fund out. You know, we thought we were pretty okay about two months ago and then last month wasn't quite as, as healthy and now we're back to where we were a couple of months ago. So, I think things are moving in the right direction. A large, a large amount of bills this month to go from the moment. So, we'll see where we land in January. I would expect we'll be down a little bit. But, all in all, we're going in the right direction with the cash balance. On the general fund bills, there was $223,000 this month and of the 223,000, $131,000 were tuition or open enrollment out and about $30,000 was utilities, which is higher than normal for utilities, but I guess given the goals bill we have, um, that might be a little bit extra. So, so anyhow, of the 223, those two items account for about $165,000. So, other than that, most of the things were what you're used to say is pretty typical. Here was one bill in there at Iowa Central for $10,000. That's, uh, first and that's for our auto tech. Do you have any ideas on what we have on that?
Right now, we've got four. Four. Four in the seventh to eighth hour.
Yeah. Yep. So, other than that, anything else that you had highlighted or circled on the general fund that we can talk about? Um, activity fund really was Chicago trip prepayments and FFA pre-sales. We pretty much sum up those bills. And then under the loss fund, we had the second payment. If you remember, we really bought the fourth, uh, fourth payment versus a couple of years ago. We ended up paying for two of them and then leased the other two. And so, that's the second payment. So, we have two payments left that's worth about $5,000. So, we're at the back.
Are the payments done? Mark, what?
Your annualized. So, we have two years left coming up unless you, I actually thought about making that wrong. Maybe something to give to you and people here that's just sticking out weeks off.
Yeah. Is there a financial advantage in that?
Just a little bit interest probably about $10,000 or $200,000.
Oh, that's probably fine. Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-two years.
And we got the money.
Maybe we'll all do when we did the ten and eight next month, we'll all have the exact amount of interest that's remaining on. I'm too great with the break and the rest here for a little 300 miles. Amanda, is there anything on the agenda that you had highlighted?
That comes out of our double column area. We got a million and three in there.
Yep, we're fine. Alrighty then. I entertain a motion to approve the bill.
So, move.
Motion in the second. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carrying is three zero. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December 15th, the financial statements and the revenue on account.
I make that motion.
Motion in the second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carrying is four zero.
Okay, thanks, John. So, we'll move on to reports and we'll let Barb start first.
Okay. Just two items listed. The first is that teacher leadership and compensation grant and there's some course funds that we received from the Department of Ed regarding our application. We will be funded for the 16, 17 school year. So, we do not have to reapply again. The AEA will start working the schools that will implement next year and then they'll also, they're also starting to work with schools like us that will implement in 16, 17. So, I guess the bad news is we, we won't, we won't get to start as soon as next year. The good news is we know we're funded and we've got a plan. Frankly, with our accreditation listed in April, simply that it's the spring, this might just be okay, that it's worked out, feel like that it has. Second item was just to update you on where we are, where we are with hours and days because there's been lots of questions come out. So, how are we doing for the calendar and that sort of thing?
Yeah.
So, first of all, we have four days, four full days that we've missed so far that are part of our calendar and two of those work for weather and two work for other reasons. So, we'll have, we have four days to make up. We made one up in November. We did one in January. We were fortunate that the education association, the union agreed with us that we can take that as a student day rather than just a teacher work day. We'll do a day February 2nd, which was designated as a PD day and more than likely we'll take March 2nd as well. So, we're just gonna hold off here to see how things go. We're trying not to add to the end of the year because seniors can miss up to five, can be dismissed up to five days prior to the rest of the student body and our understanding is if you're just watching more closely, that's what schools are actually doing. That's always been and I will hope, but when schools would miss days and if they added them to the end of the year, they never brought seniors back after graduation to meet that five-day rule. And there's just lots more documentation and accountability regarding, regarding that. So, right now, our plan is to schedule makeup days on base of, you know, seniors will still be here, so days before graduation. Some of the questions that were asked and mostly these three questions came from the faculty. We have a calendar that's measured for students by hours, so that's 1,080 hours minimum. Okay, so it's a 1,080 hour minimum calendar and our calendar without current teacher conferences is scheduled to be 1,120 hours. So, there were additional hours more than what the state requirement is. So, if a school plans for 1,120, that's the number of hours there to have as far as close to that as I can get. We don't just say, well, we've got 1,000 days, so we can just give up those 40. We plan for those in our 170 days for students and then our 185 days for teachers. So, that's the intention of whatever the school sets us for, the number of hours. Some schools chose to operate their calendar by hours, some schools have chosen to operate by dates and either way is legal, but there are different guidelines for those, for each of those calendars. For us, because we're a school hours, instructional hours, we have to get as close to that 1,120 as possible, but then we need to balance that with 185-day contract of teachers. Okay? So, the day when we get out two hours late, well, the day for us is six and two-thirds hours. Okay, 6.67. So, if we have a two-hour late start, then we have 4.67 that day. If we have a two-hour early release, same thing. Everyone who's on hours subtracts 30 minutes for lunch. That's just the state guidance. We don't subtract for recess, we don't subtract for classes passing. You have your beginning time, your ending time, you subtract 30 minutes and then that's what it is. And whichever building has the shortest released, shortest day, that's the building that you count the hours for. Ours are the same in our building. So, we have 8:15 to a 3:25 day minus 30 minutes, the issue is two-thirds hours per day. And a little bit of the balance between a teacher day and a student day because we don't have anything in our master contract that says how long a teacher day is. So, if we start school two hours late, we've got four and two minutes hours for students, instructional time, but it's a day of work for the teachers. Because we don't have any language that says anything any different than that. So, that's probably more the length and one of the things we're trying to negotiate. The negotiations is more specific about what those, what the length of a half day is, what the length of a full day is. And we'll be able to work it out. The association knows that and recognized to write away that that was gonna be a problem. So, what we don't want to have are days when we start late and then have to come back around and say, well, we're gonna release early and we get two hours of instruction, let's say, and it's a work day for a teacher on contract. So, if we think that we need to start late, we have any idea that we're gonna have to release early, we'll just not have school. Because we can't burn teacher days. I cannot come back to you at the end of the year to say, well, guess what, we get 30 more hours of teacher time because 185-day contracts to them. Well, I guess I could do that, but you wouldn't want me to and the business manager wouldn't want us to and teachers wouldn't want that to happen either. So, we're just trying to be really cautious now about on those days that there's weather issues, just how we manage those. The schools that are on hours, every school has the same issue that we do. I don't know anyone who negotiated in their contract how to count those days because it was oversight by everybody. It's kind of an unintended consequence. The day calendar, if you say, well, why doesn't we go by the way? Maybe we should be a day school. You have to have six hours to have a day. And the, the kind of unwritten rule about, well, if we serve lunch, it's a day, if we do X, it's a day, if we run the buses, it's a day. Those were never rules in the beginning, but people, those were sort of like myths that everyone believed in. But now, if you don't have six hours, you don't have a day. So, one way or another, we need to do what's, if all they're cautioning us to do is to do what's right, we need a day of school. If we're gonna count it as a day of school and be funded by the state for operating a school, then we need to have legitimately a day of school. I think all the questions that are in here, I probably described to you right now, we're at 544 hours from the end of our first semester. So, we would be on track if we wouldn't have had late starts or early outs, we would've been easily on track to make the 1,120. And I've gone back to read the documents a couple of times about what's considered an emergency and the research to safety, the safety of the school. So, weather, we like to safety and if we don't have those 1,120 hours, because there's just all sorts of rumors about how this all works. There probably still will be, but at least another, you know, 15 people probably now understand it. Do you guys, do you have any questions?
No, I think you did a good job of explaining that.
I don't think there's any, uh, they have each quote unquote for a district to have days versus hours. I don't think, I think it's however the school looks at their calendar decides to find out. It seems to me it's just one, one way or another, it all shakes out. The six hours a day rule, the day rule, you have to have 180 days of school. So, that's 1,080 hours. So, it's 1,080 put over one, any way they can look at it. We have not started to look at the calendar at all for next year. I think we should wait a while to see how tough the DE is related to that start date of, of that later start date. Some schools are really having the impression that they can make the case and write an appeal to say that it would be academically disadvantaged to them to start late. I really do not know what we would say that would, you know, convince someone. Other superintendents in schools are just saying, it is what it is, just, uh, command and order, it's just that that will not be the issue. So, this is where the academic side of it, it doesn't seem like there's something disadvantaged to any people, but as this gets moving along, legislatures back in action, then we'll just get anything that happens. But I'll keep you.
Whoa.
Can you hear him?
This works better. This is taking a service.
Yeah. What we said in that earlier.
Yeah. Yeah. I think Mr. Litter has to relax more too. Those would be the two things I have.
Whether you or not.
I do have a couple of things to worry about here. Just a few things as we start the second semester, just to report some things to board, things are going on at the high school. First of all, we're going to be administering the MAP test, which is the measure of academic progress. The middle school's been doing this for, I think, a couple of years now and it's kind of a following. It's a nice sequence for us to be able to measure our kids as they move from eighth grade into ninth grade. And so, we're gonna be administering the MAP test this spring. They were ordered, they should be at, I think we're gonna try to get that done in late January, early, early February. And they are all online, are all computer-based, so for us being a one-to-one, that makes it a pretty simple process for us to do that with. Another thing that we're adjusting, we've had a working lunch program here for eight years and it's always been something that if a student has overdue assignments, they report to the library with their lunch tray. Last year was every, every day of every, every week throughout the entire year. This year, we moved away from that and saw a spike in overdue assignments. So, what we're gonna do is every, every three weeks, we're gonna have our working lunch program. We're gonna start it on a Friday and it'll go Friday up to next Thursday where if they have overdue assignments, they'll come up to the library where I'll be and they'll be working on that and they have the stuff that they get assignments there, they're all cut up the way they go. Under the old system, that probably took care of about 75% of our students that had overdue assignments, the working lunch just got them and they just got their stuff turned in the way they went. The problem is that other 25%, what do you do with them who are, who are constantly need that extra support? And so, on that Thursday, when, if they don't have everything turned in, then after, then we're gonna have, have them after school from basically 3:25 to 5:30. And they'll be, and we've, we've got several teachers who said, yep, I'll be going to help and that, and that's really where you're trying to give that, that extra support. So, if I'm struggling in math and if it's calculus or chemistry, this guy is of no use to those students who, who, and that's just, it is what it is. I mean, I can show them what the assignment is and what the page number is, but that's about my limitation. We need somebody who knows chemistry, who knows calculus, something like that, to be there and say, okay, this is what we're working on here. And that's, and it's hard to do that throughout the day when their study hall is on the second hour and that teacher's prep is fourth hour, it doesn't always match up. And so, every three weeks, we'll have that type of a system. We do have a bus that comes down from the middle school, rides here about 5:25 and so there will be a transition, a bus that will go back to SAC to help with some of the transportation, vote and take care of all the transportation issues there too. So, I'll, I'll keep letting you know how this is going, but we think that's the next step in the, in the process here, to try to work with some of our students to truly get the next support that we need. We're gonna offer two additional classes this second semester. We're gonna offer technical math, which is gonna be taught by Eric McCullough and Marie Booth. The focus of that is, in technical math, is students who might be pursuing like an auto tech with that precision measurement or carpentry, some of those types of fields. And so, they started that here last Wednesday with that class. And we're also gonna offer something called culinary marketing taught by Christina Crucio. And really, this is kind of a business type of class focused on, on food process, our food preparation, alright? And we're gonna start rather small, but it's gonna really start with, you know, advertising and quality control and eventually to the point where they're actually producing something for several people and things like that and put it on the market. But it's gonna be about, just a small undertaking this year as we get our, get our feet wet with it, so. And part of that was based on a survey that we took last year with our students, just trying to get the more interest in some of the FCS classes, because we've got a really good CTE program here and we want to continue to encourage kids to get involved with our CTE programs. And so, those are the two classes we're offering. I guess I'll let you know how things are going with that too. They're still changing schedules around, they've got to tell tomorrow they change their schedules around, so definite numbers, I'm not quite sure what we're at with that, if they have more data to get that accomplished. And then, couple more things here. We now have a include pantry, it's a school pantry, that is being over, not overrun, but overseen by Mrs. Miller. And again, it's, it's something that, that we started this year with some support from several people and the Iowa Food Bank program. So, we're excited about that and the potential that that has to, to, to assist our students and things like that. And lastly, a couple other, some second semester days that are coming up here. We'll have our Chicago trip on March 22nd through the 25th. We have our band and vocal trip to Orlando on March 28th and the 31st. April 18th is prom and May 17th is commencement, which we've got 70 seniors currently anxiously getting their credits in preparation for that date. So, oh, one last little thing, I'm sorry, I should mention this. Last Saturday, January 17th, we had a prom dress sale from Ten and Tail Two and that was really organized and supported by Carrie Icor, Rachel Gimmer and Amanda Miller and students, parents from outside our district. We got dresses from all over the place that could come in and drop off a dress, potentially sell it. So, I'm amazed at how expensive prom dresses are, $800 prom dresses and things like that just kind of scares me with the dog in the screen, what that's gonna be like, but I should've bought one. But it might be outdated.
She would've loved that.
Yeah, I know. But anyway, it was a good program and if you ask the three, the three teachers who was in the staff, they'll tell you it was very successful. We also had assistance from NHS girls, NAF outside of girls that kind of helped with some of the stuff like that too, so.
My daughter worked at that, Kevin, and she says she had a blast.
Yeah.
All of them did.
Yeah.
So, it was really neat.
Yeah, that's, and Carrie Icor almost got kind of emotional telling me about how good those, they just go with, with the people coming in and stuff like that.
Really?
That was really awesome, so. Anyway, that's things that I was.
Thank you.
That's a good question, really quick. Where did that money go to from that prom dress sale? Do you know?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head.
Kevin, I asked, it's just so they can keep the program going.
Oh, okay.
Pays for recs and the advertisements and stuff like that.
Okay. I didn't know if it went to a certain.
I wondered that as well.
Where or something.
Yeah, and some of the dresses were not donated.
Right.
The owner.
Oh, got to push that back.
Like, I might have a dress and I might put $75 on it and I think $5 went back to the dress for less, just for handling it and whatever. And the rest went to the owner.
Okay.
But lots of the dresses were donated.
Very good.
I was amazed at how much work that took to make sure they were cleaned and they had, lots of them had to be repaired just because there were sequins coming off or sippers that were broken or whatever. So, that was quite an endeavor for them to, but a good experience as well, so.
Okay. We don't have any old business, so we'll move on to new business. Discuss and/or approve SAC County Hazard Mitigation Plan and what'd you say, John? Two years ago?
Three, four, twelve, I think.
So, almost three years ago. I kind of volunteered to be the liaison or whatever you wanna call it from the board to this plan and I had to do it for the city anyway, so I was there. And basically, what we did was met just about once a month and over about nine months, I think it was, and sat down and we talked about each city and, you know, where, where are your hazards at if, if some, something, a tornado came in and hit, you know? Where are your places that could be hit and your city's gonna be in trouble and, so really, I didn't have to do anything as a school because the school was one of the first, first places listed on every city, you know? If there was a school in the city, that was listed right away, so, so I really didn't have to do anything. But I looked today, because it's been so long since I've done it, and I looked today on the internet, the document that Region 12 put together is 618 pages, hazardous mitigation plan. It has everything in it from an introduction to community profiles, hazard and risk assessment, vulnerability and loss estimates, plan maintenance, mitigation strategies. Each city has its own little section, so you can learn everything that you ever wanted to know about early if you wanted to go on there. And so, I mean, it's a good plan to have and Region 12 is just trying to finish out. There's a couple of school districts and we're one of them who hasn't approved the resolution and I don't believe that's our fault. I think Region 12 knew that we had to do it if I, if I can speak out of class there, so. I mean, I would say that we should approve the hazardous mitigation plan.
In your packet, they sent a sample resolution, so if you just give them, approve the resolution.
So, move. I have a motion in the second to approve the hazardous mitigation reservation from Region 12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, we'll move on to discuss and/or approve Board Policy 303.9 Administrator Employment. I think this is something that Brent wanted to have on the meeting and Brent could not make it tonight and so I'm not sure if there's anything that we want to discuss about it. If you'll remember, we had this on our last meeting and we talked a little bit about volunteering and, and having a paid position as opposed to being an administrator and so personally, I like the way the policy reads. I don't know if you guys have any other, anything other to add to that? Barb, do you have anything to say about it or?
No. And I, Brett called after work today and said he will be at the meeting, but he did not mention anything in particular about this policy, so.
This comes from the school, right?
This is our current 303.9 Administrator Employment and I'm assuming that a school attorney four years ago, when this was approved, that Danielle helped write this and develop the policy.
She did.
So, you think you can do that if it wasn't for her?
Well, I mean, honestly, if we're gonna do that, we really don't have to do anything, do we? I think, I think what Brett wanted to do was he wanted to discuss and see if there was anything that we wanted to change in the policy.
Or, or?
Yeah.
Do you foresee a situation like that coming up again as to where, is there anything that we could do to it to make it so that it's better than before again or, you know what I mean? I hope it wants to get to that point again.
I think that's a good question, but I think it's, I mean, the, the way I look at it is, I mean, we've got 10 or 12 people here and I think each one of them could read it and gain something different out of it than I did, so.
And in my opinion, I, I mean, I hope that, and I'm assuming you guys kind of share the same thought as I do, I think maybe not, but I don't think any of us really wanna get into a discussion again about volunteering and what you think, you know what I mean? I don't think that we all think we're pretty is.
I don't think anybody has a problem with anybody volunteering as long as it's not detrimental to their, to their, their original job. I really don't.
Which that states in this policy, so.
So, what do you guys think? I'm okay with it staying the way it is.
I'll put it on the same agenda next month, just to.
Just, but it works.
We did ask him.
I mean, and if he doesn't, we can leave that.
I think that's a good idea. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, move on, discuss and/or approve vehicle purchase.
You're me, boss. We have 12, what I'll call small vehicles, vans or Suburbans, that we transport students in. Additionally, we have a van and two pickups that, our school vehicles that we, we do not transport students in. Of the 12 that we have students in, they range from a 1997 to a 2008. And Phil's, I think this has kind of been a discussion between Phil Howes and our office for four or five months now and we think we need to start updating that plate since our youngest customer was six or seven years old. He got prices on Chevy Express. He got prices on Chevy Express vans from Domino's, a Suburban from Domino's, and then a Ford Transit from Old Oak Motors. So, our recommendation is that we probably should just two vehicles, and we recommended the cheapest one in your packet. We think that'll work fine, and maybe the least costly. The plan would be to trade in one of the older seven-passenger vans, so we'll get a little bit of a trade-in. And then, the ninety-six van that I did not highlight, that is on the list, needs to be jumped, it shouldn't be on the road, it's not safe. So, the, one of the existing vans will slide into, that's used for maintenance right now, that's the van that Mike drives. One of the existing vans will be slid over to the maintenance department, and then we'll put two new vehicles on the road with kids on. That would be our plan, if I explained it correctly.
Anybody have any questions for John? How much money did exactly come on that drive to get home coming?
Six thousand dollars.
That was it, sir, about six thousand dollars.
It was six thousand, because that's the maximum.
Max, yeah.
Were you thinking to get one from each?
That's my thoughts, I mean, they were awful, awful good to the school about getting this money, and when you look at, I mean, granted, it's seven hundred and forty dollars, but, I mean, people in the community will do those things if there's, if there's some kind of, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I kind of thought that same thing, Jay. Yeah, six thousand dollars is a pretty big deal for that trip, those trip kids, so. And John, I apologize, I just thought it was left field or something, so you got, you've got a ninety-seven, a two thousand and five, a two thousand and seven, and a ninety-eight.
Right.
We're gonna get rid of the ninety-seven?
No, the ninety-seven is a nine-passenger, it's the only nine-passenger we have.
Oh, so that one's okay.
So, he'd like to keep that for now, though, probably, since we, we were talking about getting two, we threw out the idea of replacing that, since it's about twelve thousand dollars more. And maybe do that on a year where we only buy one.
Okay, I see.
It was a process.
So, you're talking about the two ninety-sixes that aren't highlighted?
The one ninety-six, and then that bottom ninety-six is a pickup, we'll keep that, one of the other seven passengers, whichever one Phil says is in the worst condition.
That's one we'll trade.
As well, Phil.
Did you put that off the bill, was that correct?
Well, we traded.
Traded.
Thank you, traded, yeah. Yeah, if we were to sell it, we'd definitely put it on the bill.
So, these numbers here are without trade?
Yes.
How many passengers are there?
The, they would be eight-passenger vans.
Did we look at the fifteen-passengers? No, we really didn't.
We talked about that with Phil before, we bought this fourteen-passenger school bus that we have, and there were some State of Iowa School of Law's with that, so we had problems.
And how much do we have for something like that, would be a question that I would have that I don't expect.
Well, occasionally, I mean, Ben would occasionally have ten or eleven.
Yeah, you can't have a van that's had more than nine, nine people in it, and that's the law, so like, even our big van, we have to take the backseat out, so, to make it legal.
So, with the fourteen-passengers, it's the yellow one.
Right.
Well, if we don't have any other questions or comments, I'll, I'll take a motion.
I think Phil would be happy with whatever he said, so, if it's in hand, we'll wait and back next time.
So, you don't think he'd have a problem with going with the one from Beckman Motors, two different?
No, I don't think so, because I, when, when we started the process, he fully expected we had to put two fours. He was fine with that, he was surprised.
I make a motion to buy one vehicle from, first one from Domino, correct?
Yep.
One from Domino, a van, and a second van from Beckman Motors.
Here we have a motion in a second to buy one van from Domino Motors and one van from Beckman Motors. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Which is Carrie. Discuss and/or approve SAC Community School Education Foundation Board of Trustees.
We have a letter from Brent, Brent's president of the SAC Education Foundation, and the first is a letter, and in that he names the new, as well as reappointed trustees, and the front page has the list of the new trustees on, so they're requesting that the SAC Board approve the new trustees' partnership agreement for a term of three years, and Reggie Boyles for a reappointment for three years. I'll make that motion.
So, a motion in a second to approve the trustee for the SAC Community School Education Foundation Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Do we need to have some kind of communication to those two people going off and saying thank you?
Okay, E, discuss and/or approve varsity wrestling location. Larry and Kevin, you guys want to start?
Basically, you know, we talked about this last year a little bit with John, and we talked about it, and I, and we made the decision without the board, we just said we were gonna leave it at Wall Lake, but, you know, we went through the baseball situation, baseball and softball, the board was involved, so we thought we, you know, we'd bring it to the board and, you know, get their thoughts. Now, there's some pros and cons both ways, and I'm, you know, and I'm just gonna kind of go through, I put in your board packets, some of the issues on both sides, and first of all, I'll go through, you know, some of the reasons why they'd like to keep that wall. Like, first of all, mat storage is available, they got a rack there, and the mat that rolls up, that's real heavy, it's got, it's only got three sections, it's actually stored on the wall there, we got room for it there, and it's easy accessible to, you know, right there at, at the facility. And then we've got the other mat, and we have a quad that's, that's got, what is it, seven sections, John? That, that we roll up, and they're off to the side there, so, and if we would go somewhere else, of course, we'd have to move the mats, which is kind of a, kind of a pain for the people that are moving the mats. So, that's one reason. Another reason, Mike, is that it doesn't affect the PE schedule at Wall Lake, the PE at Wall Lake is only two days a week, it's on Wednesdays and Fridays, and so, the mat that's on the wall, that's rolled up all the time, it takes about probably a day and a half, two days to take it down and lay it out flat, so that it's ready for the meat, so, if, if we'd have it at Wall, or at SAC, or at Lakeview, it might take some PE time away, because those mats have to be laid, laid out on the floor, okay? And the other thing is, I mean, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to lay all, we could lay them up on top of each other, but it might just take a section of the gym, it might not take the whole gym, it just might take a section of the gym, because we could lay each, each one of those three sections on top of each other. The other thing, we'll not lose two nights of the use of the Lakeview and the SAC gym, because we'd have to have those mats laid out, and then it would cause problems with basketball practices, but at both of the facilities that we use for basketball practice, both Lakeview and SAC, so, and if there's any other activities at night, they wouldn't be able to use that, that gym at that time. Another concern was concession concerns. For instance, we have basketball concessions over at SAC, and we've got the junior high basketball concessions here, we had a wrestling meet, and we'd have to take all our concessions out, like for the junior high basketball games, and then get the, the wrestling concessions in, and it'd be a hassle maybe for the concessions people, and, you know, there's, there'd be some scheduling conflicts, which we can work around, but like, for instance, if we had a, a junior high basketball game scheduled, and with a wrestling meet, we might have to reschedule that somewhere else, or if it was at SAC, we had a varsity basketball game, we might have to use, move the varsity basketball game over here to Lakeview, you know, just depending, because the meets each year, you know, they, they kind of rotate around, so you don't know exactly where they're coming up, and you might have some other basketball games scheduled, but we might have to do some rescheduling, so there might be a few scheduling conflicts. And the other thing is that they wanted me to, you know, and Steve wanted me to bring these up, is that they made the following improvements to accommodate wrestling at Wall Lake, moved the scoreboards over from SAC, that were, that were the old scoreboards that were over there, we moved those over, they updated the PA system, made shower improvements in the two main locker rooms with, now, the other locker, there's a, with the third locker room doesn't have a shower, or there's one other one that has a shower, and they didn't make improvements on that, and the fourth locker room, I believe, doesn't have a shower. And then, the last they made, internet accessibility was, internet accessibility was met, and that was just recently, last year we didn't have that, but we did make, given that taken care of this year. And then, John, if you're here, if you'd like to kind of go over what, you know, your feelings, since you're here, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I can, you know, first of all, this was kind of brought to our attention by the association, you know, is what it came down to. In October, the association sent a letter out to every superintendent, high school principal, athletic director, and coach, and, and basically, what it said was that, first of all, that all dual meets are to be scored, are to be live scored using track wrestling, and so you'd have to have an internet capability. And the second thing was, is that the rule regarding the size of the mat was now going to be enforced, and it was going to be enforced because there had been a catastrophic accident somewhere where a, a kid is no longer mobile, I guess, I, they didn't really explain where it was, didn't, didn't say where it was, so, what they've said is that the safety area around the circle has to be so large. One of our mats fits that, the other one didn't, but we were able to bring that up to, to speed. And then the third thing they said, is they said that they wanted to make people aware of, and it would not be enforced this year, but they highly encouraged people to abide by this rule, and that was to be ten feet away, that everything should be ten feet away from the mat, all right? Now, when we lay our mats out at Wall Lake, we have a forty-foot mat and forty-two-foot mat, that's eighty-two feet of mat, and that gym's probably eighty-five feet long, and so, you know, you don't have much room on either side, and then the mat goes across, and I think probably, I'm guessing it's probably about forty-four foot across the gym, probably, that, and that might be generous, well, then you, that only has been allowed you two feet on each side in front of bleachers. So, in Octo, well, this first part of November, we come and met with Larry and, and said, you know, this is a concern we have about the, you know, the safety of the kids. Yeah, we've been trying to relocate for some time the, the, the facility, because when we host, and we have to have two mats out there, there just isn't room to get around, plus that the locker rooms we have is that, one locker room doesn't even have a stool in it or a sink, and another locker room, we use the music room, and a third locker room, you know, is a storage room until that day, and then they take everything out, and it becomes the locker room, and I think the third locker room, I don't think it's a hundred square foot, so it's, you know, it's a pretty small little locker room. But, so, you know, it's, it's, when you have some of those squads that are, you know, a little bigger numbers, you know, getting in there, that's, that's not really the best place to put them. And like I said, we were, we brought, brought to Larry's attention the, the track wrestling, because, you know, last year we tried to use it, or, excuse me, another school tried to use it, and they were unable to do it, and so, I think they've updated, I don't know, because I don't know if anybody's tried it yet, because nobody's asking for the passwords to get in and log in, so I'm, I'm hoping that it works. And, and like I said, with the single mat, we, we were able to bring that up to code, I would say, when you Larry, the, the, the other, the other mat, but it's when the two mats are in that gym, it just isn't, it isn't, doesn't work, you know, and that's, that's what I would say, that if you have to have a meet where you have eighty, eighty-two feet of mat in an eighty-five-foot gym, it's, you're just not, you're asking for something bad to have, or I should say, I shouldn't say it like that, but, you know, there's not a lot of room along the edges, so, and, well, like I said, when you have the two mats there, that's where the issue is. And, you know, I think that, you know, the safety thing is why it was brought to our attention, and, and I, I don't know if next year they will say you will follow two-point-one-five or not, you know, I don't, I don't know, because the two-point-one-two was kind of a surprise this year, but it's a rule that's never been enforced, but somebody got hurt, and so now it's being enforced nationwide, you know? So, two-point-one-five is also ruled as not enforced, it's kind of like, I was trying to think of analogy, it's kind of like the stop sign that I think is, that they put up in Lakeview that I'm not really in favor of, I figure I grandfathered into it, and I probably don't always stop there the best, you know, but, you know, it's, it's still a, a rule that I should stop there, but, but, you know, I'm taking my chances when I don't.
I think the root, the reason why it's not enforced is because of the facilities involved. You know, you went to Gretinger, you had for the conference meet, two mats, and that gym's about the size of our small gym, you know, and so that's one of the reasons why it's not enforced, because they, they wouldn't be able to hold some of these meets in some of the facilities, so that's kind of the situation that we're, we're sitting in, so.
On average, how many meets would we host a year?
Two.
Two, or maybe three.
Yeah, yeah.
And are, are they typically both two-mat meets?
Usually, one and one, or, or two and one.
They're, they're getting to be more two, just because people want to, you know, get more wrestling in, because if you, if you play, if you do a quad, you can wrestle three teams, it only counts as one.
Right.
And, and the thing is, it doesn't take any more time, because you're, you're still wrestling three times, you know, it's just you're not sitting waiting for your turn, so, they, four team, four teams wrestle just as quick as three teams wrestle, if that makes any sense.
Larry, one of the questions I had was the gyms that we have currently, you brought up that we might lose some gym time. How busy are the gyms?
Well, you know, and, and a lot of it, you know, comes down to, and I know this is school-related, but I mean, there's, you know, the younger, the younger kids, you know, whether it be the basketball, volleyball, and all that, they're pretty busy, I mean, at nights, but, you know, I, I still think we got to take care of our, you know, the high schools facility first and work around, you know? And that, and that's the reason why I wanted, I brought it to the board, is because, going back to the baseball and softball, and we made the decision way back when, when we first went together, is that we're gonna have wrestling at this facility, basketball at this facility, and, you know, baseball wherever, softball wherever, and so that's kind of why we thought we, we should bring it back and let, you know, you guys make the decision on it, if you, you know, if you really, if you want to move it. What I don't want to see is that, okay, one night we're gonna have a wrestling meet here, the next night we're gonna have a wrestling meet here, and move it all over, because then it's, the communication thing gets all on whack, I mean, it's.
Nobody wants SAC, because you don't want a team coming from Gretinger and go to Wall Lake when they should have went to SAC, you know? I agree with that.
You know, I, I guess, too, you look at, you know, Larry mentioned that you would lose use of the gym, you know, there's schools like, like I, for example, I know Manson, they'll have a girls', they'll have a basketball game tonight, and then just lay the mats out after the game for tomorrow, you know, I, I mean, then they would have a tournament the next day, you know, and like, I think Gretinger had a home basketball game, Gretinger had a home basketball game on Friday, and had a tournament, you know, Saturday morning, so, you know, you don't have to lose like two days of laying the, the mats out, you know, they can be laid out tonight for tomorrow, and, and like, yeah, you know, I guess that, you know, if, if the PE knew ahead of time, you know, maybe the PE could, you know, I, I don't know, you know? And like I said, that, that the mats are, that you would have to lay out would be about fourteen, thirteen, fourteen feet wide, forty foot long, so you'd have them piled on top of each other, and, you know, you can stick those three in, stick it in the corner, you know, or, or whatnot, you know, and, and so I, and as far as concession. as far as concession concerns, I hadn't really heard that one, but, hell, they can have concessions, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, I, I look at it as an extra opportunity for them to sell concessions as opposed to, you know, tell Mrs. Smith, you have to do it.
You have to keep those separate, Larry, is that what you're?
No, what I'm saying is that whoever has a concession in that building, they can have the concessions that night for the wrestling, I mean, it's not a.
What are you saying, like, if the person's ever doing, if they did came here to do it, was ever doing the junior high concessions, they could just well do the wrestling.
Yeah. You know, that's, yeah, I mean, to me, that's, that's, that's not a, an issue, and, and, you know, I, I think, really what the, the bottom line is here is, guys, is that our, our facilities, our, our facilities for having, you know, locker rooms and such like that, you know, we're gonna have to do some upgrade, because it's, it's not really, it's not really so sweet, you know, in our, our buildings, you know, I mean, I, I don't know if you've looked at facilities or, or talked about, but, you know, it, you know, the, you know, we, we keep forgetting that this, this gym here's, and locker rooms are 45 years old, and that's the two good ones. The ones downstairs would be closer to 80 years old, you know, and they probably were pretty nice when they were built, you know, in the 30s, you know, but they're still 80 years old, you know, and one's over at Wall Lake, you know, or, you know, those, that locker room underneath the stage, that's, you know, 50 years old. And, you know, there's just, there's, you know, that they, you guys are gonna have to look at some facilities, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, and that, that's regardless, you know.
How mu, how many kids do we have out currently?
Well, I've got eight boys out currently.
Eight boys?
Yes.
How many boys are on a team?
14.
We've talked before about whether it's viable to keep the program going, and, you know, that's nothing that we can make a decision on tonight, but that's, that's a concern that I've had ever since we started the program, when I was in school. I think we had five or six kids out then, you know, that was 25 years ago. And so, one of the things that people who have never wrestled probably don't know is if you don't have a, if you don't have a decent-sized wrestling squad, you can't really have a good wrestling squad, because you need to be able to wrestle somebody else who's either better than you or just as good as you to get better. And so, you know, we're talking about spending money on facilities, and I'm not one to take anything away from kids who want to do it, but I'm not sure that it's really viable to keep the wrestling program, honestly.
You know, I, you know, I keep our money in the waters, Chris, you know, I mean, the, you know, I, I think, I didn't realize that, that this was gonna lead to that, you know, I mean, that, you know, I came in here to speak about, you know, the safety of, of the children involved, the safety of the kids, athletes involved, and, you know.
When you start talking about spending money on facilities, we're gonna spend money on?
We won't have to spend money on facilities for wrestling, I didn't say that. What I said is that we need to take a look at the district, across the district, at the facilities we have, because they are not, they need to be brought up to date, and I'm talking about locker rooms regardless of whether, you know, of where it's at, you know, the, that, that's what I'm saying, and that, that's just my opinion, you know, you know, throwing it out has nothing to do with where you choose to put things, it's just that, you know, that I think that, you know, we, we just need to take a look, you know, it's, and, you know, I, I should have kept my mouth shut and not said that.
First several years, you, you heard about, you know, our wrestling program was not competitive, and, you know, so, yeah, I mean, it's just something.
And if that's, and if that's a conversation, then it needs to be in a different board meeting than an agenda, I can talk about the wrestling program, so. Tonight's about the question, really, the call for the question is really the kinds of, ends up we've gotten from these guys. Future discussion sure can be an agenda reading to about just the program in general, like we would talk about any program that came up for our conversation.
So where would be the best place to host the meets?
You know, and that's, you know, that's entirely up to whatever you guys think, we could, we could host it at any, any of the facilities. I mean, if we have to move the mat, we're gonna move it, it doesn't matter if we move it to SAC or if we move it to Lakeview.
We have one media this year, John.
Yeah, we only need one mat, so we, we are not talking for anything this year.
So this, this is not something that's gonna make a difference on the meet January 29?
No.
I know I came from a district that moved mats every meet. Granted, it's in the same town, the wrestling, wrestling facility was at Old High School the night, just like John, whoever talked about it, the night, they brought the meet, they brought the mats up after the basketball game was over, rolled them out, and they were there for the next day. Yeah, there, there's some costing incurred with that, that being trailer, but I think we have a trailer. There would be some costing incurred with fuel, and there would be some cost incurred with custodians or something to move those mats. I, I guess I don't see it as a big thing, I really don't.
The only thing is, would be the PE though, too, I mean, if we got something with PE.
That would have been my two cents worth, and I don't really know exactly what I'm even saying when I say that.
Well, the thing is, is that, you know, we shut PE down for a day this, in January for a blood drive, and it wasn't even a school blood drive, it was a, it was a private individual's blood drive. So, you know, I mean, I, I guess that, you know, to, to me, that's, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Well, and I was more concerned about it, to finish up, I was more concerned about it when I was thinking about more meets at home, but when we talk about two, three meets, my concern really was, geez, we're not gonna have PE for how many days, well, we're not talking about that, we're talking about two, three times a year, so, that feels different than it does where I had, you know, six in my head or something, and I guess even that wouldn't be out of my respect.
So what do we want to do, guys?
First of all, I think we need to have, we'd like to talk about, just another discussion I have about wrestling. I, I would make a motion that we have home wrestling meets in Lakeview, just for the, just for the fact, from, from Wall Lake to Lakeview is 10 miles, I do know it's hard on those mats to get them out in the cold, and, but that'd be my recommendation, is to have the home meets in Lakeview.
So we've got a motion to move varsity wrestling from Wall Lake to Lakeview. Do you have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second to move varsity wrestling from Wall Lake to Lakeview for, good?
Can I interrupt just for a second? Could we make this starting next year, since we can get by with one mat, so not a big lot of scheduling change, are you okay with that?
Starting in?
I think that was the intended discussion.
Okay, I didn't know, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move varsity wrestling for the 15, 16 year from Wall Lake to Lakeview. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, we'll move on to resignations, we have a couple of them to look at here.
Yeah, during the packet, one from Melissa Salgado, and high school, you know, right? And then the second one is from Val Booth, and she's a middle school special ed teacher, and I would like these separate, because Melissa's is just a resignation, just, Melissa's is a resignation, Val's is a resignation and accompanying application for early retirement, so they can't be together, so I'd like to ask you to do those separately.
So I entertain a motion for Melissa Salgado's resignation first.
Salgo.
And a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Make sure we thank Melissa for her four years of service. And then, so the second one, we're gonna approve a resignation and?
Yes.
Early retirement, both?
Yep.
Okay, so I entertain a motion, Salgo, aye. And a motion in a second to approve Val Booth's resignation and early retirement, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And definitely make sure you thank Val for 29 years, I think I counted, of service for our district. And contracts, we do have, do have those.
We have four contracts for approval. Jake Randolph as school liaison, we accepted that resignation a month or two ago, a $32,000 for 10 and a half months contract. Amanda Miller as, we accepted that resignation last month, her salary would be $9.59 for next year. Sue Strong as an associate in the SAC elementary for $9.13 an hour, and Paula Lawson as food service, and that's also in SAC elementary for $8.50.
Any questions on those board, guys?
Jake, what? Just background, actually, his qualifications are exactly what we were looking for. He's had work experience at Cherokee Medical Health Institute, has done some work as a tracker for Starlight Schools, and currently works for the Stevens Center, which is a lot of work that's much like social work, and he works in schools, he's hired by the Stevens Center, but works in middle school, high school.
You're getting an excellent man. You are, you're, you're getting, you're getting an excellent person, yeah.
We heard from someone else, Melissa in our district, who's a juvenile court officer for that area, and she had said she would hate for him to be hired here, but she was glad for him to be hired here, because her family lives here. But he's had kind of the right kind of experiences coming to us, and, young guy, married, lives in Shaler, he's very excited about the job, I think when Kevin called, he, we expected him, you know, to say, well, we'll give you a day or a couple of days if you want, and he's like, I'll take the job. So it was a really good interview, we had our, one of our juvenile court officers actually sit in on the interview, and asked some questions, and I guess I wouldn't be the thought of asking, because I don't know about that work so much, and I, I knew that the answers were on target and were just given with ease, so we're very, very happy that he found us and we found him, so we think it'll be a great match, and he'll start February 2nd. Middle school in Wall Hill, he's K-12, he'll work K-12, and have some assignments in all three of those places. The one thing we're gonna have to do is make sure he just gets plenty of time to get his feet on the ground, because there's a lot of parts to this job. We did have him visit with Kale, and then we had Kale visit with him in terms of just giving us another recommendation, and I think that the conversation went well, and Jake found out there's some parts to the job that he hadn't quite understood before, but that's good that he knew that in advance of us offering him a position. And honestly, I'll repeat again, we feel very fortunate to have found each other.
How is that typically, is that, what do you usually see, you presume that what building will work a lot of time?
There isn't, there isn't any, and that's some of the questions he would ask, would be things like that, and, you know, where Kale spent the majority of his time might be a little different now, just based on who his students are that he'll work with, and his personality, and Kale really worked where he needed to be, and so that will be how this pans out as well. Less work with elementary, more middle school, high school, but I think we probably expect for a match of that as well, so. Yep, we feel fortunate.
I entertain a motion to approve, can we approve all four of them?
Yep.
And a motion in a second to approve the contracts as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Can we back up, I forgot something under superintendent's report.
Sure.
It's quick, and I know the board will be excited, it's, our accreditation visit is in April, and I look, but I, I do not have the exact date, but what I, we're gonna need a couple of board members, at this point, we prefer not to have.
I'll probably be gone that day.
I think I should.
Brent's not here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mark.
Boards either have a couple of board members, or they have the entire board, and I don't replicate it the last time we had accreditation visit, that we have the entire board. So we're looking for a couple of board members, you don't even have to volunteer unless you want to make sure that Brent is one of the people tonight, since he's not here, but I, included in your board packet are the kinds of questions that Val asks, just so you have an idea, there will be lots of interview groups, classified staff, licensed staff, administration, like some program, the heads of some of the programs and that sort of thing, so we have lots of groups, student groups, community group, so you take a look at the questions, you don't have to volunteer tonight, I'll bring the dates of the meeting, of the accreditation visit with you, with me next time, and we should probably even know that the day of those days, meetings here.
I think the first day is April 14th, Mark.
What?
I think it's April 14th is the first day, April 14th.
I don't think either one of you had anything that.
I don't have a free one, Brent.
That's a Tuesday, I believe, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Last time we did have the whole board.
Do you think that we did?
I, yeah, I'm sure we did.
Well, you know what, maybe at the next board meeting, what you can do is decide if you want the whole board present or not. But you've got a month to cash.
Weren't you and I at the, one at the elementary school?
Oh, it wasn't necessarily an accreditation visit, though.
Free, preschool.
Right. Weren't you there?
No.
He tried to get out the other one, what?
Yeah. Okay, so we don't need to make any decisions, it's just, it's not, for one, yeah. And I'm sorry, I forgot it.
Okay, so, future dates and agenda items?
Yep, I'm gonna recommend the third Monday of February, which is February 16th, 6:00 at SAC City. Agenda items, Mr. Fisher and I have talked, we would like the transitional kindergarten, alternate kindergarten program as, as a discussion, because we need to give you some information about funding for buying home programs, there's just no funding, and there's parents that are asking, are we still gonna have it or not, and we think February's a good time, it's gotta be just before our teacher conferences, so we'd like to have that on the agenda. We've already talked about just the wrestling program, so we'll note that, John was gonna bring some information about maybe a game of wrestlers. I've got, I don't remember what you said about that post in 3L39.
Bring it back, if Brent wants to.
If Brent wants it, okay.
Do we have any other outstanding moments?
Have you, have you, I haven't been to a lot this last month, have you had a chance to talk to, to the gal with, from the first spring?
Actually, Mike and I met, not last week, but the week before that, and he was gonna bring a recommendation back to me, and I, I haven't heard it from him, but yes, we talked about that, and there were a couple, three questions we had to get answered, and I think I wrote it back to him.
For the public, there'll be a public meeting in January 29th at 4 o'clock in the high schools, with two initial proposals with the associations, the education association, so they'll present and they'll present, so that's a public meeting. January 29th, Brent, 4 o'clock, high school.
A week from this Thursday, 4 o'clock here will be their presentation and ours.
You're more than welcome, but not expected.
So can I have clarification, there will be further discussion on the wrestling program next month?
Yes. Yes, we thought that was.
Can we adjourn? Brent's not here.
I'm standing still.
That's kind of grabs you out. Jay, you're going to have to take over.
A motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Thank you all for coming.